Usually bad.
Well, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We appreciate everybody being with us tonight. grateful for the school district and being here with us. We'll go ahead and begin. We've asked, well, Councilman Baird is on his way, so we'll have a full form here shortly. And then we've asked Councilman Edrich to go ahead and give us an opening prayer, and then we've asked Chief to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful and to be for the many blessings we receive each day, and we're grateful, Father, for the country in which we live and the freedoms that we enjoy and the opportunities that we have because of our freedoms. We ask thee to bless us that we will be mindful of them and be respectful of them. And we ask thee to bless us this night that we will make decisions that are beneficial for the city in which we live and the people we represent. And we say these things in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ, human.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay, we have a minutes for the September seventeenth meeting.
Yeah, we already talked with Sunshine. There was a date and just two words put together, and then I think it's Jeremy Larson. So I move we accept the minutes with those corrections.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
Second my Councilman White. Allen in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We have our public comment period for those that are here tonight. You take up to three minutes to speak to the councilor there. Are you here tonight that would like to take that opportunity? Allen? As far as council appointments, committee appointments, we don't have any tonight. No public hearings. We'll go to our action items. We'll turn the time over to Mr. Bake with Cottonwood Creek Trail Phase Two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have some stuff we'll put up before you. We are coming back tonight to talk about Cottonwood Creek Phase Two. I got some more information from Ryan who is out of town, hopefully having the hunting of his life. Being safe, I should say. So the Cottonwood Creek Trail Phase Two, this will connect Highway forty to the Roseville City Golf Course. It's within, it starts within the nature park, right there where the purple lines are. This will be an eight and a half foot wide paved trail with bridges and lookouts along the way. So what we're essentially wanting to do is take this, Phase Two will be from the back of Strata all the way up to the golf course. And then we also have the proposed lines from Jones and the Mill, or I apologize, from Sunrise Engineering of what it would take to paint the lines from Clubhouse Drive all the way to Arriba Drive. So I'll do a breakdown of the financials and then we can discuss the project. So right now, the Roosevelt City funding that we do have in place, we have an outdoor recreation grant for a hundred eighty-six thousand two hundred dollars from twenty twenty-three, outdoor recreation grant from twenty twenty-four for a hundred fifty thousand dollars. We have applied for a twenty twenty-five one, which we have not heard back from. We received a UDOT TIF grant for three hundred eighty-six thousand forty dollars. And then the city has budgeted from their capital fund seven hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars for just over one point four million. The engineers estimate cost to do this entire phase, including bridges, abutments, everything is just over one point one million. So we are quite a bit under budget and we have not even heard back from the outdoor recreation grant for twenty twenty-five. So the timeline and the reason we're requesting approval to move forward right now is we have done everything in-house that we can do. We've gone and paved or blazed the trail in places where we can, but we also need to get approval to work to get the right of ways with some property. This is our timeline for the fall twenty twenty-four. Work on the right of ways, cut the trail further, put in the bridge abutments, the drainage and retaining walls. Then during the summer of twenty twenty-five, the bridge installation. And the installation, we'd have to order the bridges now because of the many months it takes to get them there. The pavement and the signage would also be done twenty twenty-five. And then if we chose to paint the lines from Clubhouse Drive to Arriba Road, it'd be seventeen thousand dollars. So we'd like to add that to this overall budget if council would like to include the painted line so we can connect it all the way up into the end of Arriba Road.
There's Jones and the Mill.
He called you. Last week I did attribute this project to Sunshine Engineering, so. I'm all over the place with engineers on this project.
We do have a clarifying question on your new engineer though. Is it Jeremy?
Yeah.
Okay. We know who you are, and we appreciate all the work that you're putting into this project.
It's just ten days. Aaron is here from Sunrise and he has all the specific answers. But that is one of the reasons we're requesting approval to go ahead because there is certain things that we can do right now. We can get the bridges ordered, we can start cutting more trail and everywhere that we do have right of way, prepping it for next year.
Do you want, do you have the actual breakdown? Can you show me?
I think it's part of the packet, but I just want to make sure that it's.
Is this the one or do you want the second one, which is?
Yeah.
No. It's the center one. Yeah, that's in there twice, the same one, but it's a different caption.
The only reason I bring that up is just for the one for public information, but then.
So those are all I have. I'm sorry, you may have this one.
Didn't make it in fact.
This should have been the one in last one.
Yes.
This was in the last one.
That's right.
Also in the minutes, if you can.
Yeah, can you put that in the minutes? And so when we approve this and you can just, as we through this project, and they can work within that one point one seventy million? What is it, one point? One point one seven. Yep. Yeah. And so the where the funds are coming from, that is not in the package. I can absolutely produce a preference. My cheat sheet to remember where, how much we're getting for each grant and then the timeline as well.
But I just wait for the previous package to load?
Are there any questions on the project while she's?
So timeline, we were hoping to be finished by next, this time next year?
Next summer.
Next summer?
Assuming we get the pavement.
Right, obviously we're always waiting for things and so it could be a while for some things, but.
And ordering the bridges is something that can take a.
Is there any, I mean, it's great to have more money than you need for a project. That's usually not the case. Is there any stipulations on the grant for the grants that we do have that like we can only spend certain, or is it just for the trail?
As long as it's within the boundaries.
Okay.
Grant to set. And that's one thing that we've done where this money has actually been extended out because in the nature park, we were able to do a lot of things in-house. We saved a lot of funds there through Danny and Ryan and some of the work they've been able to do. We've had a ton of volunteers, dedicated hunters. We've got service groups. We even have the, I'm gonna get it wrong, you want to base in Princesses?
You change how I wrote?
Yeah, yes, they've been cut down. We've had a lot of volunteer that's really cut down on costs. It's made the project go a lot further.
So I'm sorry, I wasn't providing that for previous packet either. There's no attachments for that item. So I'm not sure where that was displayed.
Well, as long as we get it in the minutes and as long as we get it to the public on its website, but can I see that breakdown?
Yes.
I had a question also that you mentioned additional funds for painting the road up to Arriba?
Yes.
So then they're able to go through over to two hundred?
Yeah, we have the same question.
Clubhouse.
Crossing the, we.
Well, I think he's asking the same question I was. So Arriba, Arriba is Clubhouse to me. I think it goes.
Okay, so you're talking all the way to two hundred?
Yes.
Yeah, so it was about the other end, but I.
I had the same question earlier. I'm like, wait a minute.
So the seventeen thousand is for Clubhouse and Arriba?
Yes. At two hundred.
Try away, are we still trying to work out?
With the property owners?
Yeah.
Yes, you're like, maybe like a six minute. So, but we have multiple options.
Right.
For those, for those segments.
When is the next meeting? Because I have a couple of thoughts on that too.
Next Tuesday, I believe, in fact. I should be. You won't be there. This is the one summit. Zooming in. I can do a Zoom meeting. Always schedule a Thursday at that works. Would that work for you?
I think so.
Let's take, yeah, well, let's talk about it after the meeting and then.
We'll set it up in time because I don't see it on my calendar. Ryan hasn't sent it out yet, so.
One pod, two, when it, when it gets to two hundred north, I know there's a little work to be done there, but I think that's an easy, that's a low hanging fruit from two hundred north to one thousand west and then down to the walking path.
Right. And we kind of just need a direction decision there because there, again, there's two options your side of the road.
Yeah.
We say that's. So we have a little contingency, maybe that we can add that later. Because if we get to two hundred, that's great, but if we get to the walking path, I mean, that really kind of connects another area that people walk to the, behind the hospital.
Yeah.
Good, yeah.
Yeah, just like Josh said, kind of trick is just to make sure we knock out the UDOT funding because it can only be spent for those two, for that one segment. And then, yeah, that'd be great to be able to see what funding you have left over that you didn't have to spend on the segment that's the UDOT segment and then keep marching south.
Yeah, so I'm guessing if we have one point three million, it's one point seven. We have not to, it's only seventeen thousand to paint lines through that. There's only a couple of things that have got to be fixed. The one thousand west, I can think of this section between two hundred north and one hundred north. That needs a little attention. And other than that, it's pretty, I mean, pretty, yeah.
Yeah, it shouldn't be really easy once we get past that.
Any other questions for Josh on Phase Two of the Cottonwood Creek?
I would just move that we proceed with the Phase Two with what we have and then have the mayor and Josh and them work on some of those easements and contingencies to finish up, you know, the part we need. But I would move, let's, let's get this part going and get it done, get things ordered, et cetera.
So that's the motion to approve the one point one seven million.
Right, yes. Thank you for adding that.
I'll second.
Second my Councilman Allen?
Verifying clarified, it's one point one seven million sixty dollars.
Okay. No, 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 it's, I, the one point one seven actually accounts for. Because I rounded up.
Yeah. I don't know. This is one point one nine seven.
Okay, so he must have included the paint in there.
Okay. So we can do that because the paint doesn't have to be approved right now.
Well, I think we should.
Yeah, let's just get her done.
So let's include the paint.
So what's the total for most?
One point one seven six sixty dollars.
Good. Did you get that, Sunshine?
I did, yes.
Thank you.
You still second that?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any motion is unanimous?
Thank you.
Uh, did you want to do the trail loop map or did we cover all of that?
That was the one.
Well, we had the one we showed, this is.
Was it the?
About the overall master plan idea?
Yeah. Were, did you address that? I just didn't.
Yeah, discussed that. Discussed a little bit in the last one.
It's just your trail loop map and then.
Yeah. Yeah, so we get an idea of what the whole loop will look like.
Wow.
The old, old man bent over. But as Mayor mentioned, there's just one small section that we need to address on the road and then with paint, we'll be able to connect basically from Strata all the way. To the walking park. And even then, we'll be able to come further down for pulling on the road.
Yeah, and I would, Aaron, I think the next stretch between Highway forty and Lagoon Street. If we can get that stretch, working on that.
Can start from there.
From there to the walking park.
Yeah, because if we can get to Lagoon Street, we might not have a trail system down Cottonwood Creek, but at least we have sidewalks down Lagoon Street, so we can go clear down, that'll complete another major section if we wanted to loop it. In the meantime, we're working on the Cottonwood Creek aspect of it. But at least that gives us a, an area for people to, they can walk and bike.
For sure. So maybe that becomes the Phase Three.
A hundred percent, yeah. Any other questions? At least that's my own, that's my own thoughts, but. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Bake? South sewer line extension request, Kevin Jessen, Director.
Okay. Good evening, Council, Mayor. We bring before you tonight a proposal down on two thousand south, a developer by the name of Kevin Jessen owns fifty-seven point eight acres. That is in the county currently. He is wanting to annex into the city and would like to get city services as far as the sewer goes to his development. He's about four thousand feet to the, let's see, Sunshine, go west. Just step over here, keep going. So we're looking at this road here. We have a sewer line in this intersection, a main line that we would like to tap into and continue down whole line, still keep going west.
Andrew, remind us what the size line is, maybe we can connect right now?
That will be our twenty-four inch curvy?
Yes.
Our main, our main line. So keep going, Sunshine, a little bit further and further. So right here would be the parcel property we're looking at, fifty-seven point eight acres.
And where is, is that adjoining to city property?
It is not. So we would need to get an easement down the side of the road from the county. I spoke with Mike Hyde on this and, and if approved, we'll go after that easement so he can satisfy attaching the Roosevelt City property. What we're looking at doing, he needs an eight inch line for his development. Roosevelt City would like to plan for the future, the whole line road for a future trunk line to Highway forty. So we would like to propose an upgrade from the eight to a fifteen inch to satisfy Roosevelt City's future growth opportunities to Highway forty. So the proposal would be to pay the upsize from an eight to a fifteen inch with engineering fees, which, if you pull up that other paper. So this is the cost breakdown. So that first, that cost column there, four hundred fifty thousand, three hundred dollars would be the developer's cost. The next line there below has a total of a hundred forty-nine thousand, three forty would be the upsize charged to a fifteen inch line with engineering fees. So that's what we would be looking at, spending to upsize and track for a future trunk line to Highway forty.
Would you go all the way to Highway forty now or just?
Yeah, at this time, we would just dead end his property line. He will be putting the line in as well. He is the contractor. Obviously, we would have the appropriate engineering done on that for him to pencil that out adequately with the grade that we need. We do have grade. We, we did define that already, so can you have grade cleared to?
Does the sewer line going to that property require the easement already just to put the line in? Then, then it makes it possible for him?
Correct.
So just by putting in the sewer line, then he's connected to the city?
How big is the sewer line we're connecting to?
It's a twenty-four inch main trunk car.
So, um, one of the thoughts that I had, has any of the other property owners been contacted to see if they'd be interested in?
Yes, I think spoke with a few of them, not all of them. Uh, we've had mixed response thus far. As far as the route that we're looking at going, part of the way would be on the north side and then jumping to the south side. So we have contacted a few of the property owners. It's not been super positive as far as the results of, we've already got a subject system. What's the benefit? So we're trying to wade through that as far as the opportunity would be there to tie into the city sewer if we annex those parcels in. So we're still working through that. That is a possibility. I think there's three property owners that we would need to, to work with if we stay outside of that county easement.
Can you show the map again? On the north side of that road. That's highly developable property, property as well.
So the route we were looking at going would be on the north side of whole line to about the outcropping of the hill and jumping to the south and going the duration on the south side of the road for the remainder.
And I mean, we could even work, I'm just thinking future development if that pivot were to, because is that Patrice?
At State Street and whole line intersection?
No.
No.
Yeah, that would be Jim Batteries.
You mean that ever sold for development?
Yeah.
That's a, that would be low hanging fruit for annexing that into the city and capturing.
Yeah. We, we've had interest with Lance Denver subdivision already with the property owners that have purchased those homes. A few of them have reached out to Kevin and Jessen. If he does get the sewer line, they would be interested in tying in and annexing it as well.
I'm a little concerned about the cost of the city when they're not, I mean, they're not right next to the, I understand the potential down the road. I'm just concerned they're not, this feels like something we don't normally do unless they're next to the city, right? Don't usually, do we have other, yeah, because they're not, if he was annexed, then I'd feel better, but he's, he's wanting us to help with the potential that they want, they would annex.
We would not participate unless he does try next.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be the stipulation on this agreement. He would have to annex it for us to.
But, but when we annex, do we have parcels that are? But, but when we annex, do we have parcels that are, that are annexed into the city that are not connected? Cause I thought that was part of the.
The closest one we have to this, and I, I see what you're saying, Dom, and that is Stonegate subdivision. So it was kind of a creative thing, we. We basically, we looked at Stonegate and how it was annexed to the city, it's very similar. To this meeting, it's kind of a flag, it is legal, it's just not. It's not.
Can we create a right of way that would be city property?
I, I just would feel better if it was, yeah, I would just feel better if it was connected personally. Just thinking out loud, again, I don't know all the details and I can see potential, I mean, obviously, it helps us, so we're. That's good for the city, so what, what were your thoughts on this?
I feel like if we're going to grow this area and keep, keep the potential, keep it in Roosevelt City and not the county, this would be a great opportunity for, for the city.
What I look at too is if the Denver subdivision, if we would have had sewer there. They would have probably annexed and we get sewer, any other future developments would most likely want that. And because the developer is able to build on much.
Smaller lot.
Yeah, smaller lots at that point, so it's much more. lucrative or.
So just to the east of their, or tho- tho- that's county, right? All to the east of that lot, that.
Yes.
All the way to State Street.
All the way to State Street, right?
My guess is it'll fill in eventually, yeah, there's a lot of annexations.
Council, one thing to think, if we did get a sewer line down there, all those existing homes, there's great incentive for them to want to connect the sewer. Right now, they have septic. If they have the opportunity to have sewer, there's great incentive for them to get the sewer and then they would have to annex.
Soon as their septic system fails.
Right.
Which eventually it will, they'll be connecting, but right now, I mean, I'm sure.
So if we have the line down there, then that would give them an option.
Right.
And then that, then they'd want to annex.
But what we've done is if you want city services. And you adjoin city property. Then the precedence has been set to annex into the city to get your services.
Right, and that's what I was thinking of was that part. Cause that's my only real concern there, I understand the potential, I understand it's great for the city for us to have that annex, that part I get.
We currently have a ten inch main line in Highway forty and pole line intersection by Sunbelt. That's the largest lane we have out that direction, so this would help grow that area as well for the future. Obviously, we're not all the way to Highway forty, but this would be a, a head start down that direction.
Right, yeah, cause once you have that part, it's not much to keep going around.
What's the distance?
Four thousand feet to where he would be stubbed out.
And do you know the distance to Highway forty from there?
From there? It's probably another half a mile, I would bet, or a mile, maybe five thousand.
He was mentioning it's probably at least a third of the way. I was just curious, just. Cause that will kind of tell us what the cost will be.
Right.
Pays this. And our portions to upgrade it from an eight inch to a fifteen, the cost to city.
So what is it?
Yeah, he's paid him a four fifteen.
Mayor would be around sixty-seven hundred feet to the intersection of Highway forty and pole line.
Yeah, so it's two thirds of the way there.
Which there would be a need for an upgrade.
They might quite have.
Right.
But still, so you think. I'm just curious what it costs to finish that down, so you just moved that, cause I know what Drew's talking about, we've got a lot of interest with people. Uh, wanting to develop west. And besides pole line road. Um, we don't have any. Really.
Not a good way to go other than down Highway forty.
How many homes can a fifteen inch sewer line service?
Uh, fifteen inch, we'd be looking at around a thousand fifty.
Do you have twenty-seven hundred homes in Roosevelt right now?
So if we approve this, then the first step would be that they would then have, cause we'd have to have a public hearing, right, on the annexation, or is that?
Yeah.
So this is just given direction and then if.
Sure, then you'll start the annexation process.
And then if they, if they do that, and the county probably okay with it, it's just.
Yes, in fact, I spoke with the.
You said Mike Hyde.
Yeah, with the economic development department over there and, and this is a mutual. Agreement that they would like us to see if the potential is there, they would definitely like to pursue that.
And they're okay with losing a few other, cause it does for the county, I guess it doesn't matter, they're still collecting taxes, so. It just makes it they don't have to provide some of the services.
And eliminates a Stonegate potential problem in the future if we provide sewer.
Do you, have you checked the Toronto to see financially where we sit?
Right, that's my other question.
I've not, as far as what the available funding was.
I, I, that was my, gonna be my other question was, cause that's, I mean, we haven't budgeted for it, we don't know. Cost wise, I'd be a little concerned. I mean, I think we could handle a hundred and fifty, I just would want to make sure, right?
We do contingent on, you know, budget review and.
Sure.
So I, do you need a motion or can we just say we'd like to?
I think we need a motion because I think the developer's probably waiting for us to know whether he's gonna annex it or not and then.
Okay. I, I still just, I mean, I see potential, just slightly hesitant, but if, if you feel good about it, then.
I like that. That, um. Four hundred and fifty thousand will be paid by somebody else for this project and we won't pay a hundred and fifty thousand.
My, my thought is this is on our plan, things to do. And the cost is not gonna get cheaper.
No.
So let's get it done.
Yeah. So I think then the motion would be that we approve to go forward contingent on the checking the budget and, or budget officer and. Go from there, does that work for you?
We have a motion that.
I just like the idea of planning for future growth, like I think that's an important thought to have, so.
And. Is that a second?
I just had a, so that would include the, um. The requirement that they had, except for this.
Correct, yes. Okay, so the motion. You got the motion?
So I said motion to approve contingent upon avail- availability of funds in the budget and successful annexation?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
We have a second by Councilman Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, thanks Drew. Roosevelt City Crosswalk Discussion. Allen?
I swear my name wasn't even on there.
Yep, it says Kirby.
Mine says it right here.
And you got thrown under the bus.
Or is, these guys were already, those school districts showed up now.
Mayor of the Council, I'd like to recognize, we have members of the school district here. I'll kind of give you a little background on how this happened, we have one of our longtime crosswalk people retired. I don't know if you guys remember this woman, she actually got hit by two hundred north, anyway, she retired. We put out for the job. But we couldn't get any applicants, it's fifteen dollars an hour, you have to go about seven thirty, you have to go to two thirty. So it kind of messes up your whole day, not a lot of applicants, but it brought the question to me, is it, who's responsible for providing the crosswalks? So I got with sunshine, she was able to pull up the statute and she brought it up and said. But the city is responsible to provide crosswalks. There's certain circumstances, so we got the grant, the grant looked over it and the point it works is this. If you have lights, if you have a crosswalk and if you have a speed reduction. Then you have to provide a crosswalk person. So if we look on the map, I have sunshine on here, we go down south to Meadowbrook. So and let me kind of point a little bit out, and they're all messed up just to get to the end. This one is the one we have lights, we have lights here. And we have a light down here. And we have a crosswalk, which is here. And we have a speed reduction, so technically the city's responsible to pay for a crosswalk person to be at this crosswalk. Where this one's messed up is that this crosswalk contains two intersections, right here and here. So if you see the sign here, the blinking lights, so that's twenty miles an hour, but let's say you're here and you turn left here. You don't know if the lights are on or not. Most of the time, it's just one crosswalk, so by the time you get to the crosswalk or turn, you don't have enough time to get up to speed. Cause the crosswalk ends right there, if that makes sense, but this one is two intersections. But technically, the way the, the statute is, is we should be providing the crosswalk person there. And in the past, we did, we had a crosswalk person there. When they built Centennial and maybe the school district can remember some of this more than me. They built Centennial, this is why they put this crosswalk in, because they were very concerned about the kids. Were gonna be walking over here, because it was close enough, but they weren't gonna bus people in. So they needed a crosswalk, but then they decided to bus people anyway, is that?
Yeah.
So this is actually a bus stop, and even though the crosswalk is used. By the kids, it's not used by a lot of kids. They have a bus that drops them off and picks them up. So that's that crosswalk. If we go up.
It's a courtesy stop there, so it's not required to pick up kids there, but we do, just for safety.
Right, exactly, that's exactly right. We, we can go to this.
Yeah, it's going into Meadowbrook.
Yeah, that's one in Meadowbrook, so this is Centennial right here, we have a crosswalk down here. We have a speed reduction here, but we don't have lights. So technically, the city isn't required to provide a crosswalk. Person to this one. And what, what we really want to get with the school district is to find out how to get this fixed so that we are in compliance. If you can go to King's Peak. Right here, so King's Peak is totally different too, is that this is two hundred north. This one used to have, if you remember, it used to have crosswalk lights at this location. However, when they put the new lights in, they took that out, so technically. We don't need to provide a crosswalk person to this one, because we don't have lights. But as everybody know, this one needs a crosswalk person, so we have Gary Hardy, um, who's here. Doing that, and I think that King's Peak, they walk their kids down to this intersection right here. And then they, the kids kind of pull here and some kind of walk here. And Gary does that.
I know they've been using aid on three hundred north, the, uh, a teacher aid will.
Yes.
Be a cross, to cross across, uh, three hundred west there.
Exactly, so technically under the statute. We're not required to have a crosswalk person here, but it really, it really needs one, and Gary does a great job. And then the junior high school. So this is, this is one that, um. Susan Nor, who was doing this, she quit here, we couldn't find anybody. The new principal down there, Mrs. Earl.
Mm-hmm.
She had a great idea, she said, hey, let's just hire one of our aides who's already gonna be here at school. And have the city hire her, and then she'll go in the mornings, we'll pay her the, for the hour, she's there at night, we'll pay her for that. So she's here now, but this one is not compliant either, because this one has three crosswalks. And we only cover one. It has a speed reduction, but no lights. So, and this is one that, especially at, um, after school, you have to have a crosswalk person. So anyway, uh, East Elementary, they take care of their own. I don't even think, they're right on a twenty-five mile an hour road, and I don't even think they have a speed reduction. But what Grant wanted me to, to bring up to this is that we want to get into compliance with the. We want to get with the school board and work with them, and we need to decide how to get in compliance. So now we're kind of just letting you know what our intention is. We, we want to get with them, when we come back, we may need some engineer, budget maybe. Some money there for them to actually look through, decide what we need to do. Um, and we also wanted public input, cause if everybody knows, as soon as you start taking down a light or a sign, the public is pretty upset about it. So we wanted some input with that. Does the school board have anything to add on it?
I know on the junior high, the one on the far left, we have a teacher that comes out and helps. Helps our buses get out without any traffic and then helps the kids when they cross the road right there, so. I don't think we, I think the, we may have painted that middle one, I don't remember, but, but yeah, that one down at the auditorium on the right.
So I've, I've substituted and crosswalked.
Yeah.
People here big time.
That's real necessary.
After school is.
That's crazy.
And we've had our own people down at Centennial help with eight hundred south and five hundred east. You know, cause it's easier for us to schedule our own aides to go out and get the kids across the road safely.
Right, the, the other thing that happens is, is in the morning, you have to have somebody that's very responsible. You can't have people just not showing up.
Yeah.
You know, the times, I mean, I've done crosswalk hundreds of times, most of the time up at King's Peak. But those kids are expecting, especially the elementary kids, they're expecting that crosswalk person there, and they get really nervous if they're.
So Lieutenant Tucker, on all three of those schools, the, the problem was the lights, it sounds like, right?
Right.
The flashing, the red and yellow sign.
So over the, over the years, and let me start with the old history, over the years, these schools have been built. You know, we used to have lights down by the Ballard Maverick, but they put that crosswalk thing in, so they took those lights out, so then we didn't need one there. And to all the building and all that other stuff.
Got lost.
It's all messed up. And so we just want to get with the school district first.
What, what do you, what do you need us to, to look at?
Well, we just want to get some ideas, what do you guys think, um, safety wise? And then, like you said, I don't know if they're, we'll get with them, I don't know if there may be some money that we need for engineers to actually take a look at it and see if it'll come back to you.
So is the statute that we're trying to follow to have somebody there all the time, is that city statute, state or state statute?
It's state, it's state statute.
Do you know that number?
Do you have the number? She's awesome.
Is there a, something like that for the lights too?
For the lights, so it, it, it details when you have to have a crosswalk, when you don't. But it doesn't really detail, should you, should you, um, this school, the way it's set up, should you have a speed reduction? Should you have a crosswalk, should you have a light? And that's kind of where we need some input.
Can I go under the road or over the road? Just put a big tube in the, in the ground, right, a big pipe and they can walk. Get up the tunnel, wouldn't they?
Of course, summertime is worse, it saves time, that's why it's making kids.
I've got an idea, because. On two hundred north, for example, there, there's a lot of, as we're talking about trails going throughout the city, there's a lot of areas. That the street is wide enough that we can paint, walking, biking paths as well. But that's something that I'm wondering if we can tie in, because fifth east is gonna be one of those areas that we're gonna have those trails going through also. And maybe we can just tag team that, as we're going through these areas of town. Almost every single one of them will be impacted, these areas that you talked about will be impacted by our trail system as well. So maybe that's something we can just tag on, I don't know what the extra cost is, but Sunrise is already helping us with that. And if we do need a little bit of study, you know, that's something I think we can probably look at as we're. And maybe even, I mean, we do have a little bit extra in that budget, safety of kids, I think it's very important. It still goes hand in hand with our trail system, and maybe that's something we could. Do if we. You know, if we do need the extra engineering.
So it's city council knows, public knows. And the school district, yeah, and you know.
Good idea, I have a question for the school district.
I was just gonna say, so we, we would basically have a process where, where we're including the school district in all that planning, cause.
Including the school district, you want to include the public? And then we're talking to the city council, you basically, it's, it's a mess, we need to get fixed, we need to get it fixed. So that the statute is correct, you know, and the kids are saying, yes.
Mr. Guy, you, you mentioned you have people helping like at Centennial. And I guess we already have somebody helping at junior high, I'm just wondering how, go ahead.
It's a little different at the junior high, she's an aide, but we're paying her.
That's what I'm getting at, because I think honestly, us trying to find somebody. And hire somebody for two hours a day versus working with the school, the school district and saying, do you have some people that we could, we'll pay them. For those hours, but let's work with you, you guys know who's responsible.
That's what I was thinking would be a wonderful idea, to make that work.
Yeah, I like that.
Cause we're already paying them for six hours a day, they, there's quite a few that would love to. Get a little extra money, get eight.
So city council knows too, so we're, we're stat school right now, meaning we're doing what they're doing, so we can have somebody in the junior high school, use somebody at two hundred north, three hundred.
Yeah, I like the, I like the, the template that you're using. Yeah, I like the, I like the, the template that you're using at the junior high school, and if we could duplicate, duplicate that in a couple other schools, I think that's the most.
That seems the most efficient, especially except trying to find somebody, we're there to have aides that would probably like to make a few extra bucks and are already there.
One with the numbers of aides we have, like, we have backups for our backups, to make sure there's somebody there, and we could, we could do that.
That's the other thing, if somebody wasn't there, the school's in a position where they can get somebody else, you know, you can get paid, this is the same person.
So meanwhile, I don't know how long this will take to plan, but is there, is, do we have it under control right now, I mean, like, safety wise, that might be.
You know, but, Mr. Guinan, we've wanted to look at the, we've wanted to look at it for a while, and we always want a police officer down there, and we have three schools that are really bad. And we don't have enough officers to be down there all the time.
Yeah.
Five hundred, uh, East is one of the worst ones.
It's getting really fast.
Yeah, I've noticed you guys have been controlling that a little more often.
Yeah.
Which has been good.
Yeah.
I have.
So, the reason I asked that question was because I, I don't know how everyone feels about speed bumps or bolt on, you know, like a. Whether that's a good idea or a bad idea or what.
We, we never put them in a roadway ever. If the school district would like to park a lot or something, not a roadway. You know?
But I think the lights are important, um, in the areas that we don't have lights.
Okay.
And those types of things, but that's something I think Sunrise can help us with as well.
If we're happy with how we're doing it right now.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bake?
We'll ask.
Coming back with you.
We skipped expenditures.
Oh, did we?
I, and I had a question.
I got this, very, well, let's talk about the expenditures, and you have a question on the expenditures?
Just, just one, I was just curious, the, on the dispatch, maybe, uh, I don't know if Chief can answer, but just looking at the increase. Uh, Vernal and Uinta were two point three percent increase, uh, Deschene County, it was two point nine six increase, and Roosevelt City was two point five eight increase. Just wondering, the, the difference in the increase, how, if, how do they calculate that?
Do they go per incident or per call? So are calls that went up?
Okay. I, I just curious, because it was, it, it seemed like if we're paying for a service, it would just be the same amount percentage wise, but.
Each time a person calls in, or reports something, or requests something, it, it's an incident, and they go, and I don't know, I can't remember what the cost is, but. Dollar fifty, eighty, I can't remember.
Is, is that right?
Yeah, do you remember at all how much per incident, or are you familiar with that?
I'm just gonna start.
Just making sure you're in Uinta County, not in Deschene.
So, uh. You do have an influx on one situation.
My one situation, that I mentioned this morning?
Yeah. And, and that.
And that was reduction from Uinta County?
Actually, Vernal's going down. I don't know.
So can we send a bill?
I, I got a couple ideas I might give with Grant.
Okay.
That's, I'm just asking you, did your neighbors have your control?
Yeah, I heard, I, I heard that. Okay. I would move we approve, I, that was my only question, I'd move we approve the expenditures and financials.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilman Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's see how it is. Thank you, Mayor. So, we're gonna forego the capital project updates, Ryan will update us at our next council meeting, but speaking of the PD and the calls going up, I would just like to point out, the chief has some of the new stats that came out, the numbers aren't going down. So even with calls going up, our PD is doing a fantastic job, and the crime is going down, so hats off to them.
Even down.
It has, which is kinda weird when your incidents go up, and your crime is, is coming down. The only thing that we have not reductions in is, uh, child abuse and sex cases. Everything else has went even further than, but the incidents, of course, that went up, we talked about that.
Other than that, I wish that, to see that go down as well, but.
We, we are working on it, the detective division has been shorted detective, and I just placed water patrol in detectives, so we can catch up and get on top of it. So, we'll address it.
Excellent. We know it will, maybe he's got it.
Thank you, thank you.
And I also wanna compliment our PD, because of the crosswalk situation, as Lieutenant Tucker said, we are at status quo right now, it's very easy for communities to say, hey, this is how we've always done it, it's good enough. They've been very proactive, and it's not good enough if we can do better, and so hats off to our PD, they've done a fantastic job of making sure, if we can do better, let's do better, so I just wanna compliment them on that as well. Thank you, Mr. Bake. A couple other updates for council, the Utah Division of Drinking Water is doing a survey on our service lines, they have to do this for part of their grant. And so we're putting this out, it starts October seventh, they're gonna try and contact all the homeowners, um, so we'll have to enter into the property of some homes, not homes, properties, to check their water lines. So we'll make sure we get this posted on social media, just giving the public an input, it's something I believe they do every year, every year.
Well, no, it's, it's a new thing that came out, uh, by the Division of Drinking Water, lead copper, so if an older home may have lead or copper, we have to provide, so they will pothole down. We've eliminated enough to where it comes out to like one hundred and twelve homes only, and we have funding in a grant to do so. And these individuals will be notified what these people are here for, why they got the big truck out by their yard, and they're just going down, identifying what their service line is, taking a picture, and that's, that's what it consists of. So that's why it's being done, it has to be done, it's a state regulation now.
Is this something they could go out with the bills, I, I guess the bills are.
No, actually, I'm, I'm on top of that, I, I, we'll go out tomorrow, we're all good.
Awesome, perfect.
There's a couple of questions I have for the engineers, I wanna make sure I'm not giving you bad information now, um, so as soon as they get back to me, I can finalize that.
No, that's previously, sorry, Josh, previously a QR code, that the homeowners, if they knew what they had, what type of material the pipe was or whatever, they would scan that, not went out once, no, right, so. So we're ahead of the game, that's how we eliminated a lot of them, so there wasn't so many to identify.
And speaking ahead of the game, Sunshine already has a post as you can see, so she's already ahead of the game as well as you can imagine.
Well, I think the important thing too is make, let people know, because with scams and stuff, people are scared to death and will come to their door, and say, you know what I'm saying, and so we wanna make sure they're aware this is coming, and that they, that they know that ahead of time.
Two other updates for council, this might be the most important announcement of the day, just getting up these, these are great ones, but on Halloween, we do have the downtown trick or treating from three to five, the streets will be closed. We have a radio station coming to play music for the kids, and so we'll have some safe trick or treating there as we close down the road. Again, thanks to our PD, our public works in our firemen, they're gonna be out there keeping the kids in the, the streets secure, so we don't have any accidents, so that's a very important one, probably one of the most. We also wanna do a recognition right now. The city of Roosevelt has received this Tyler Award for Public Sector Excellence Award winner for city management supports community, efficient city management supports community growth. So this really goes to our IT department, Brock Arnold, Rhonda Goodrich, Taylor Ruff, as they've been working to implement Tyler, we know there's been bumps, there's been some headaches that we've been dealing with, but this is a, a. Countrywide award that Tyler evaluated, some of the users of their system, saw some of the things that we've been doing, and so they did present this to Roosevelt City, so I'm holding on to a circle of hope. Um, but it is a really great recognition that we have, there is a really neat write-up they did in their newsletter, um, I'll get that sent out to all of you, but I just wanna recognize the staff that's worked really hard in making this a, a reality. As we know, it's not done yet, we're still getting through that, but there are some incredible things in place that will safeguard the city's safeguard transparency and the finances of the city. So I just wanna compliment the staff that's worked on that, and we'll display this award probably upfront in a safe location, or the mayor wants it in his office, we'll find a place to upfront display it.
I think upfront's great.
Um, I also wanna get one update on the burnt home, Grant is working to get that finalized, the, the verbiage for them, public surplus should be coming out within a week to take pictures. Um, I believe I updated council that the percentage on property is less than, um, the other things, so we're just ready for public surplus to come take the pictures, but. That should be posted within a week, we'll send you a note when it is sent out. We do have a couple more vehicles that we're surplusing, those will not be listed at the same time as a property, because if we list them all at the same time, they all take the same percentage. We wanna give the reduction in percentage to the property, so that'll be done first, because we know there's people interested in it. So there's your update on that, the burnt home, and where we're at on that. The other update I wanna give is for the side of the building by the tennis courts that we're gonna paint, um, Bill has been looking at different types of paint, he wants to check with the people that paint the murals. To make sure whatever we use would be a good primer in the future, because they're not gonna be able to get to it before the, the winter sets in, so that should be done within a week. I told him, worst case, it has to be done before our ribbon cutting, but he assures me no problem, he just wants to make sure it's the right type of paint that will not interfere with whatever mural that we could end up getting once we get some best of it on.
Have you decided a date yet?
No, so Ryan has a couple dates that we'll send out, we have the one date that the mayor brought up, that's our, our tentative date right now, but we're gonna send those out. Which is twenty eighth? I read it down, did anyone know? I looked at all of them, and I thought they were all decent dates, um, but I, I think I saw quite a few responses from the council.
Did you say the twenty ninth would work for your best?
I'm better twenty ninth, but I'll make the twenty eighth work if I have to, like, so, I, I just put twenty ninth.
I responded because I think most of them for me would work, so.
Yeah, I said the twenty ninth, but if you do the twenty eighth, I'll figure out something to make it work.
Twenty eighth's a Tuesday, right?
Okay, it's Monday.
No, it's a, it's a Monday, it's a Monday, that's why the twenty ninth was better for me, but, but I don't want you to do, because me, you, you, whatever day works for the majority.
Can all the councils just get that brought up really quickly? So I think I was too.
I could do the twenty eighth, twenty ninth, or thirtieth.
Thirtieth is, uh, my son's birthday, twenty eighth or twenty ninth for me.
I can make either day work, but my preference is the twenty eighth.
Twenty ninth at nighttime is the youth try trick or treat, anybody's planning a one.
The twenty eighth is?
The twenty eighth. And I'll be honest.
About what time?
What time were you?
Earlier, earlier.
Yeah, this should be earlier in the day.
What time were you thinking, five o'clock, four o'clock, three o'clock?
We're thinking four thirty or five, just so people can get off work. We wanna do it as early as we can during a flight, but also.
I'm good either day, twenty, twenty nine, twenty eighth, I might just have to sneak away, but I can make it work, the twenty ninth is easier for me, but I'll do, I'm, I'll, I can.
I'm good with either, so.
I'm sensing twenty ninth?
Twenty ninth is easier for me, but if it's easier for everyone than twenty eighth, do twenty eighth, I'm good, either way.
Makes no difference to me.
So.
What are you gonna do about it?
If Councilman Bear can do twenty ninth, that's the easiest one for me, but if it's hard for him, I can do the twenty eighth, and.
I think I can make that work.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we'll get the invitations, everything except for that, and the side of the building will be made by then.
Do we ever get our God we trust, is that what?
Yeah, yes, so I did. Wait a minute, no, I'm just wondering where it's at.
I, I was just thinking about that, you were talking about stuff, and I was thinking.
Yes, so I did check with Brock on that, because Bill was over that, he was hoping to have an update for me sent by council meeting, that's why I've been checking my phone, so. I do have an update, but it was, we'll get one for you.
Is it ordered, it's, we're just waiting, or it hasn't been even ordered?
I'm not sure where we're at, because I'm supposed to get an update on that, and on our main street building, is, you know, council approved the, the facade upgrade there as well. So I will have an update for both of those, where we're at, what progress. Okay, so, any other questions?
No, we have a lot of great things going on in the city.
Thank you, thank you. Do we have any updates from communities?
No.